Welcome to the Select Board. One is for the taking of the property required, second for the actual acceptance of the layout. Did we get response on availability at the school?
The 30th is a challenge. Apparently the rect department is having basketball at that same night. So the 31st is available.
Okay, that's what we're targeting, so, yeah, okay. So maybe as the opening question, where do you want to start? Want to start here or you just want to set it at the school and go there?
Say if we think we can need the school, let's just start with the school.
I feel like if we don't, we will. If we do, we might not.
Yeah, better to have and not need.
Yeah, so let's relocate that. Any concerns or changes to Article 1?
Article 1, no.
New Article 2, or detailed Article, new 2. Modified 3. 4. The asterisks are underlined, but that's actually struck, right? At least in our packet.
It's because they're being deleted or...
Okay. Oh, yeah, it looks like an underline because they're already raised up. Got it. Article 5, Article 6.
Not to be picky, but with Article 6, can you work some magic and get that total up onto the same page as the chart?
Once all of the stricken language happens, everything will pull back up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I almost did that ahead because I figured that would be a question, but...
But it'll get smaller when we take out all the red stuff.
Exactly.
Okay. 7, 8.
Yeah, on 8. On the article information. Starts approval of this article, then there's the stricken language, then it continues again with of this article, so... It should just read approval of this article proposes to aggregate.
And at the end of that sentence, when you're ready.
Yep.
To be used to maintain and secure these and other town properties.
Yeah.
Rather than just these sites that they moved from.
Right, we did discuss that.
Yeah.
Okay.
"The" in the title. For the board to secure and security of town properties? Is that part of the account title or is that just meant as...
You can strike that.
I'm just wondering because it's not in the second paragraph, in the paragraph after. So if it's part of the account name, then we need to add it to the...
It's not.
Okay.
It's to explain what its purpose is and to ensure that they don't think it's the Select Board's or a Board's account for security services.
Okay. I have no strong preference either way.
So is that then referencing board as in lumber?
Correct.
Got it.
Is this, this article doesn't, this count doesn't exist yet. This is the title we're making, right?
Correct.
Kind of propose it's the boarding, securing, and security?
Yes.
Or just change for boarding, securing, and security because then it's actions rather than entities, potentially? And we can drop "the." Does that work for you?
Okay, make that change.
Anything else on 8? 9? Overall? No changes to the recommendations. They all stand as they were. Capital planning, we approve... Oh, yeah, no, it hasn't been adjusted further. That is what was recommended. That's right.
I guess the only question is the new Article 2. Is the new Article 2 recommended by the Finance Committee?
Yeah, I'm just...
Correct. For any of you, yes.
We, we did the first one because it, it's not necessarily financial in nature. So I would almost say that the Finance Committee would not weigh in, in all honesty, on Articles 1 or 2.
How about 1 or 3 versus 2? 2 is acquiring property. For no compensation, that's a benefit, potentially. However you look at that, it could be considered a benefit. We're going to make a public way out of property we don't own today at no cost. No compensation for the property, so that one I would say... My take would be there's some financial piece to that, even though we're not spending money. But 1 and 3 are the... Recognizing the ways and the meets and bounds, which that I think is non-financial. Does that make sense?
I can see your point.
My move of my is we approve or recommend...
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any extensions? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Unanimous, striking the...
Do we want to leave 1 and 3 as we've approved or would we like to strike that? Or... Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? At the school, 31st, 7:00 PM. Now 9 articles. Good as amended? Make a motion, we approve the special town meeting warrant for January 31st, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the elementary school as amended.
Second, huh?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks. Quickly, a review of the senior work-off program. So there's been renewed interest in this since the tax bills this year, being higher than used to. I think the ask is just for us to revisit this, see if we're good with it, if there's any changes we may want to make, et cetera.
Right. There's no... Anybody seeking to use the program in FY '24 would have to do so now. So there would be no time to make any changes. The upper limit was set at town meeting in 2015, so the statute allows for a $1,500 benefit and the voters have it at 750. So if you were to make that change, you'd have to revisit it at town meeting.
And you're saying we couldn't revisit in the STM that we just approved?
You absolutely can't.
And still have it affect this year?
But it would only, they would only have 30 days to do something.
Because we're almost out of the clock, yeah.
We have to certify everything by March 1st, so I don't know how practical that is, but we could.
Doesn't sound effective in the short window, you know, anything.
But getting ready for the next tax year may be something you all want to consider?
Definitely.
Pass on it for now and bring it back?
Yeah, let's put it as an ATM article that we'd look at.
Yeah.
Adjusting it, potentially up to the max. Okay? Good. Thank you. All right. That, it is 7:01. We're going to jump into a review of FY '25 operating and capital budget requests. I need to go look at my list here, where we're starting.
Cemetery Commission, you're welcome to join us.
Thank you.
7:00 PM, yep, 7:01.
I don't want to waste any time because there is a...
There is. Welcome, come on up.
And I'd like to stay on task.
As long as one of us does, we'll be good. Awesome. Thank you, Cemetery Commission. Floor is yours.
Anybody's looking for that, that's going to be in the Public Works towards the end of that section.
So two-thirds of us are here right now representing the Cemetery Commission. We put forth a budget that is essentially the same as last year's with the only change being that we have moved some funding from the repair maintenance services line up to the ground maintenance services with the anticipation that we will need to put, it will cost us more to maintain during this next year. We are getting ready to go out for, well, I don't know who the "we" is, actually. Someone here at the town is getting ready to go out to get a new contract for the maintenance of the the grounds maintenance, which includes the landscaping and the mowing, et cetera. So we still stayed at exactly the same amount, and that's what we have right now. We will be using the remaining repair and maintenance services to basically backfill some of the expenses for the highway department to try and do a short-term solution over at the, I'll just call it the main cemetery, the newer cemetery in the center of town to get us some more land to be able to use for plots while we're still working on the longer-term solution so that we can get past maybe the next two to three years as opposed to potentially running out this year because we are very close. I don't remember the exact numbers. I think we, the last time we looked, it came up to about, there's 20 right now, but there's at least one group that has been looked at to be purchased. So we need to be able to meet the short-term needs while we're getting ready for the long-term needs. And as you know, for the strategic planning, we put in the long-term needs, even though we don't actually have any money, we don't have any word yet for numbers, but I anticipate that it will be a decently large number. And I don't know if you all remember, but what we're looking at doing long-term is not just have burial sites, traditional burial sites, but to also bring in the idea of green burials and also the column bariums where you can put cremains in there by themselves. We have tried to be good stewards here and we have increased the amount it costs to do a burial. So we simplified and increased, so it's now $500 for a traditional burial and $300 for a, for cremains to do. So if someone wants to do that. We also increased, we also changed what can go it... The amount, I don't, yeah, the number. I'm like, I don't want to say who, that sounds weird. So that if the only thing being buried is cremains, it can be 10 cremains can go into one plot. So we are trying our very best to make the best use of what we have, come up with the short term and the long term while remaining, while respecting the, what we have and making sure that it's up to the standards that the town wants. Any questions?
The, the special appropriation, the, well, is it 50,000 right now? Or it was 50 and we've expended 19 of that, if I'm reading that right? But there's a note that it's 100, is it a carryover?
You did two years of 50.
Right.
That was the first expense as of November 7th. There's since been a second bill that closed out that first contract they had with the feasibility vendor. And so that is currently at a balance of about $55,000 is what's left.
And that's to do this next date, keep working on the feasibility and hopefully some of the initial work.
Okay. I'm not following the numbers in the accounts, but that's okay.
Special articles don't show you a budgeted amount unless it was appropriated in that year, so it's not...
Oh, it's not, yeah, okay.
So cumulative, there was 100,000.
I see.
That was confusing to all of us. You don't feel alone in there. If I can just bring up one other thing that is if we could make sure that whoever sends out copies of the, of the where we are in our expenses, the Cemetery Commission did not receive any December information.
Probably have not been added into that distribution group, so we can fix that.
So we don't know what our standings are right now.
Have there any promising sites?
Yes.
Looking at expending across from Mountain Road. There's an area there. We're looking...
The tornado area.
Yep.
Yeah, and that would be traditional burial and maybe column barium. And then over closer to Holton, closer to the, so we have that sort of L shape. We own sort of an L, we, the town own an L-shaped piece of land where Holton is on. And closer to the road where it's sort of rustic would be potentially able to be green burial. And does everyone know what green burial is? Because it's, you just don't use a traditional casket. And it's to the earth again.
And there's a couple other spots, but those were the ones that the commission liked the most.
Right.
Tell me again where that second location is?
Off of Old State Road, the cemetery down off of Old State Road.
Yeah, across from, as you like to tell me, where the house is being rebuilt.
The Guinness probably, right near the power lines.
Who?
Bunny.
Oh, Bunny. Bunny's property. I have no idea who Bunny is, but that's okay.
That term just didn't click with me, but I know exactly where, thank you.
And we've looked at, we've also looked at the possibility of expanding Holton itself, but there's some, there's some issues there. And then some of the other properties, the cost, we think that's going to be prohibitive to bring in roads and other infrastructure to be able to use them because they're not readily accessible. And that's where the cost will be even more. There was one that we would have had to build a road over the railroad tracks, which doesn't seem the most viable. And some of them would be a problem with, we would have to take, we would either have, we'd have to buy land from current owners.
So on the capital request, we don't have a number because we don't have a number?
Correct. And we don't even want to guess. We have no expertise to guess.
Okay.
Right, the only other thing that we will be looking into is buying some software to better be able to track where and what has been sold and what's available and who owns it and that type of thing.
Okay. There's also a note in there about the wages right now for burials is in the highway department rather than separate. And a question mark, I think, about where they should belong. Not that we're going to answer that right now, but something to think about.
Right, because the, the incoming, when we get the money from the burial, it goes into just the regular town's fund. But we are looking to figure out how we can then, if the, if the highway department is spending time and money, we want it to, we want to be able to, for lack of a better word, reimburse it. But in order for us to do that, we actually have to have the money. We can't, we can't give out what we don't actually have.
I think our accountant would have a problem with that.
Yeah.
All right. Can, can, can the commission work with the accountant and the team about how we might handle that? Whether it's, can we have a revolving fund and those receipts end up there? And then do we end up putting the wages in that department in a whole thing? And not tonight to solve it, but can look into that and make a recommendation?
It's already been looked into.
Okay.
It's part of a general fund receipt. So we need to budget in the line of that you want the wages deducted from, and that's the way to solve the issue.
And budget the receipts and then the wages in the same?
Correct. So if...
So we couldn't put it there?
Right, but it won't be a revolving fund. It will just be a general fund function and receipt.
But it would happen in the fiscal year?
Right.
So it would be like a charge-back system?
We wouldn't even need to. We just need to, right now it's being attributed to one department. If you wanted to shift it to cemeteries, we just need to make the appropriate adjustments in the cemetery budget and transition that expectation and the cost associated with it to that department.
Perfect.
And the receipts would end up offsetting that? We can't bring them in and to offset it in the same year?
No. It's just a general fund receipt.
Okay.
So we will be putting money out that we don't get in?
It'll balance at the end of the year, but we can't do it in the year.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So as to the question of the capital request, I just looked at my capital notes. Mariah had stated when we had our capital meeting that she thinks she would have an estimate of that cost in approximately the next six weeks or so.
Okay.
So that should be forthcoming at some point.
All right.
Anything else?
Anything else?
You got three minutes.
We got one extra because we started a minute late.
I guess we didn't need a time, a clock. We got a timekeeper.
Would you like to stay for all of us?
I was going to say, there is a spare chair right over.
Because the last meeting I came to, that, the five minutes or whatever was a little over for everybody.
The, there is an open seat in that row over there, by the way.
Already got it, two things, I'm good now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCray, you want to come up and start a few minutes early?
Thanks to the Cemetery Commission?
Yes, despite being late over here. We'll start with Highway Department.
So just like it was asked, everything was level funded, except the wages, obviously. There was some numbers that were moved around. We've added some, you know, the holiday pay, vacation pay, separate lines.
Let me interrupt you for just a second, just to set that. I didn't with Cemetery because they didn't really have it, but with the new accounting software, new account numbers, that all happened last couple weeks. Thank you to the finance team and Tom, Adam, and everybody who did that. We also during that reallocated some things, so some areas we have more account numbers than we had in prior years. And so we don't have the details, so you'll see...
And so we don't have the details, so you'll see it shift around. And in some areas, we combined accounts where everything was like one item and instead aggregated. So as we go through the budgets, you may see some of that movement. And so that's maybe what's driving some of the changes from year to year where it may look a little funny. But overall totals may still be, you know, balanced.
Correct, yeah. And again, there's some new line item looking in, like I say, it was confusing to, to me also to get started with this. And but I guess it's a challenge. See what they can do for a highway guy.
New for everybody, we're all in the same boat, we'll get it.
Yeah. So I was going to say, so basically everything is, is level funded. There's some numbers that were moved out of lines into lines. The wireless telecommunications services, the cell phones for the highway department, you'll see it in the building grounds maintenance people also. It used to, it probably shouldn't have. I was taking it all out of one line item also for all the town highway peoples and building ground maintenance phones. It's been broke up now, there's a separate line for that. So there'll be a change in that line also. I think that's the only changes there to those. Everything else was, everything else was level funded for their highway. The contracted services, which is usually the line painting, street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, that's level funded also. But with doing that, it's going to cut the hours on one of the services, probably most likely catch basin cleaning, unless we decide to change on how we paint lines. The street sweeping, that, that is what it is, that's around $6,000 a year. Can't really change that unless we switch it to an every other year and clean more catch basins. So one year we may be cleaning more catch basins than line painting. We may, depending on the year, for street, street sweeping, we may go every other year of street sweeping if we have more catch basins to clean, to keep that line the same.
On the salary and wage section overall, we have not yet reallocated out of the fund after the wage changes, correct?
Correct.
So the year-over-year is going to look more inflated than it will once we incorporate that into the FY '24 budget, correct?
Correct.
So just to know, the increase for '25 is going to look larger than it will once we make the adjustments from the fund that we set aside, that will feed into '24 budget. So '24 budget will go up and the delta will go down. Which we should have done probably in January.
There's a reason we can't do that at your next meeting.
Questions on the highway budget?
Snow wages, snow materials, all that stuff kept all the same, that's all level funded?
Areas for revenue opportunities or areas that we don't charge that we could?
Right now, the only thing that we're still taking is e-waste and brush. I think we're the only town, probably in Massachusetts, that does not charge for e-waste. I think we're right around $4,000, I think, for the year last year in e-waste cost to get rid of it.
Yeah, my eyebrows are, it sounds large, it's like a lot, sorry.
Computers, TVs, monitors. People used to drop off radios, AMF and radios, VCRs. That's not what the e-waste is about, it's pretty much anything with a screen only. Everything else can get recycled through a plastic or through a metal recycling. So what was happening, everybody was just bringing down whatever they had. If they had an extension cord on it or a power cord on it, they were dropping it off into these e-waste buckets. And then they, they charged by the weight to remove them. So we've cut down a lot of that. Brian had some signs made up with the help of Franklin County Solid Waste of what the restrictions are that we take for e-waste. Most people follow that. Some are still throwing their car batteries in them and fluorescent bulbs in them and smashing them in the bottom. But for the most part, a lot of the excessive electronics have been cut down. But we still have probably three to four pickups a year. And they're four Gaylord boxes, where they like a four foot by four foot and three and a half, four foot tall pallets that they pick up three or four times a year. And brush, a lot of towns charge for brush. Right now, we have to pay to remove brush twice a year. It's a DEP regulation that you can only house it for six months and then it has to be hauled out. It's $1,000 per load. We found a vendor in North Amherst and it's a 60-yard container that they come out with a big grapple and load it up, they pack it in there, they, they get a full load out of it, but it's $1,000 a load. I think this spring and, and April, I think we had five, five loads, I think, that came in from last fall over the winter time between November and April. It was cleaned out in November also.
Roughly 10 loads a year at a.
It's probably going to average that, yes.
Okay. And just going back to the, the e-waste, you said that's a cost of about 4,000 a year?
Yes.
And I know it's done by weight, but do you have an approximate number of pieces?
No, because somebody could bring in a small laptop like you have and then the big wooden console TVs, you know, they, they put one in there, they don't load those separate, they, they put those in those. Anything goes after any of that is, is probably the biggest drop-off of those. Because people put them out knowing they can't take them and then bring them down. And because people know that it's free in Irving, it's, it's, this is not all coming from Irving.
Right. And the reason I'm asking is not that we would have to fully reinvent a wheel if we turn this into a revenue generating, into an enterprise fund, but if we were to charge by the piece or the pound or how we would manage that?
It's usually by the size of the, the screen is what most towns are. You know, it could be $15 for a laptop, up to, you know, $100 for the size of the screen of a TV. Yeah, that's what it all goes by.
Makes sense.
By the piece, they, they don't, they don't charge it by the pound. We get charged by the pound to take, for them to take it. But it's by the size of the piece that gets dropped off. I think I've mentioned this for the last few years, that it's a cost, the cost of it. It's Irving.
It was Irving.
It was Irving.
Still Irving.
I was going to say, could you look into what other communities have done and gather us some data on that for this?
For TVs, e-waste stuff?
What they're charging, what the fees are, what they're charging.
Yep. Do you want that back at a next meeting or just email the information back to everybody?
You can email it back to us, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Then we can let you know if we want to have a discussion about it in the next meeting, once we have the data.
Happy to.
What about leaves?
Collecting them?
Cost, beyond the labor and the, beyond the effort that we exercise as their disposal costs like there is with the brush.
So, so the machine, every other year, it's about $2,500 to have a, have it serviced. The impeller needs to be changed, impeller and the belts and the bearings need to be changed every other year. Because of the dust, the debris, the leaf debris, it just, it sandblasts the steel inside the housing. It just, it tears it up. It's about a week that the guys do an excellent job, they're very thoroughly, you know, very efficient how they're doing it. Gas or probably, or fuel, or probably like eight gallons of fuel a day to do it. The machine itself has been paid for, for, I think we've had that since '15, 2014-ish, somewhere in there, which was around 23 or 24,000 if I remember right originally.
So we, we dumped the leaves down there?
We dumped the leaves, we dumped the leaves down at the highway garage. There was a, a farmer that came and took them last year. We used to turn them for compost years back and then nobody, nobody was coming for them. So we just found other ways to get rid of them, other uses, farmers will come and take them, they actually haul them out at no expense.
Okay.
I did check with a recycler that is in Greenfield and they, they used to come and take them from towns. But since fuel costs have went up, I think, it's then, then turned into a service and it would have been a charge for them to come take them. Or us to truck them over, we could truck them over, but that's an expense also.
Okay.
Could I ask if it's $12.50 a year to maintain the machine? What's the cost of leaf pickup?
What's the cost of it?
Pick up everybody's leaves.
Well, we've got over a week, week three, four, four guys a week, get your calculator. He's a numbers guy.
Ballpark.
Ballpark, 90.
About roughly five grand. Labor.
That's just labor though?
Just labor.
Yeah.
For the, did you say the week or 10 days?
It's about, it's saying we're from a week to 10 days of what it takes.
I did it for a week. The, the past few years, it's been a week.
Finished in the same week.
So plus all the service, plus fuel, plus everything else, sounds like we're getting past 10 grand.
Yes.
And now, other communities, and I, I might be misunderstanding this, but I believe in other communities, you can bag your leaves and they will come pick them up, but there's a service charge.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Would you like information on that also?
Yes, sir, as well as dialed-in numbers as to what it guys cost, cost you guys, fuel, time.
Okay.
All night, please.
Yep.
Do you want the, every other year maintenance cost at half or do you want full, full loader?
However he chooses to put it in there, but let's make sure it's included.
Okay.
I'll let Glenn split those hairs.
Others on the highway, we have the capital ones still to go through. Fuel, I know, you noted that fuel for like the van for the school is not incorporated if we increase that. But fuel today is not backcharged to any department, right?
Correct.
So that is all fuel for all of the towns.
It's all town, all town buildings, yep. And I can break that report out for you also if you're looking for a monthly average use between all departments.
Because we do traffic, by vehicle, by department.
By vehicle, yeah, we have a fuel audit that, that we have to do once a month too for diesel.
If you're the board, can I ask for another meeting, another date? If, if we have to, whether or not we have to start charging for e-disposal stuff, and you mentioned places, people from other places come in and just dump their stuff for free, might we revisit the current bylaw we already have for anything goes day, where anybody can be fined if they're found dropping off stuff? So that also encompassing dropping off stuff at the, at the e-station?
Well, it's residents that are bringing it. They're not non-residents that are dropping stuff off. It's the same residents that bring multiple pieces throughout the year. Some of which they look like they've been sitting in your backyard for years.
Family and friends from elsewhere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They change their TVs more often than the rest of us. But if you charge, then it either decreases or at least it's offset, right?
Thank you.
Just, just like the trash ticker thing, look at the, look at the huge decrease once the sticker started going out, yeah.
Very cool. Do you want to touch on the, we didn't hit the capital ones yet.
Nope, are you all those, street lights, gas, snow wages, there?
Do you want to do all of those before you go to the capital ones?
If you'd like, it's your show, you tell me.
That's a question for the group. Do you want to go through the operating and we'll come to the capital section, okay?
Yeah.
Continue, please.
Snow wages, snow contracted services, the supplies, those are all level funded also this year. Electricity, repair maintenance to the streetlights, the services have all been level funded. And we just did the gas to diesel, so that's, that's it on the highway side.
Just call attention to one thing.
Yep.
Under the townwide fuel, that's also public works. If you go down to the special articles, we're working on year three of the wheel loader payment. So the $55,000 for that debt service is in that special article.
Anything else to that one?
Just to make sure.
Thank you.
So that'll be coming up after this year then?
It was a four-year debt service and a $1 buyout, I think.
Yep.
So FY '26 will have one more year.
That will be the last year.
That will be the last year, we can choose to buy it if you wanted to.
Plus a dollar, okay.
Building maintenance, pretty much same as, as highway department stuff. There's been a few lines that have been added in for the vacation, holiday sick. The, the cellphone cost is, is added into that, which like I say, was usually taken out of the highway side of it in the past. So that was probably one of the only changes. Any questions? There is no revenue generating services out of that department.
Good on that one.
Okay.
Tree warden, I think, is next, right?
What's that?
Is tree warden the next one on your list?
Yep, I think I have that one in here too, sorry.
Highway building grounds, streetlights, fuel and tree warden.
I failed, I didn't print that one, that was level funded also.
And there was an ask to look at, putting that forward to be appointed instead of elected.
An appointed position, yep. We had looked at a, a few job descriptions, I'd sent them over to Brian, so we've got some work to look at for those. Yes, I think it would be very beneficial to have it moved into an appointed, appointed position onto the highway side of it. Highway department works usually hand-in-hand with the tree board in anyways. I think it'd be a lot cleaner if we make it an appointed position.
What's the tree maintenance supplies line that's at least not looked like it's been spent much in the past?
Nope, there was, so it's, so the past tree warden had resigned, respectfully resigned. There was some tree plantings that were, that were scheduled to take place. A lot of the supplier that we use was lacking a lot of, a lot of the supply this year for the trees that we were looking for. So that's why that has not been changed. We're hoping by springtime, we're going to put an. We're hoping by springtime, we're going to put an early order in in the springtime to get everything that was committed from the past tree warden in the ground this spring.
So that's a, at least generally, it's replanting cost, it's trees, it's actual inventory.
Yep, it's 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 inventory of it, tools required to do it, yes.
Got it.
Supplies, the water bags that they get strapped to them, uh the string, the string, uh the lines out, the anchor the trees uh for their first couple of months. We had bought a watering system that, a tank that goes in the back of the truck with a pump and a hose on it to go around and fill the bags also, tree warden did.
Other questions, comments on that one?
Nope.
All right, I think we're on to the capital items.
Start with a temporary office space.
Sure.
So a few years ago now, we we started working on a new feasibility study for a new highway building with with office spaces because of the current office spaces down at the treatment plant were deemed unusable because of the the power supply that was in there. Uh we've taken on temporary office space in hopes that this building probably would have been up by now and moved into. From the cost of it and everything else that's going on, it's probably a few more years out anyways. And as much as I like my office space at the senior center, it's time to, it's time to move on to a quieter, quieter space uh that that's needed, uh whether it's for meeting stuff or just my daily, my daily stuff. So we looked into ground level office containers, they're overseas shipping containers that are converted into office spaces. You can get them twenty-foot long single office or up to forty-foot long with double offices and a common, common space in the middle. Rental on them is, I believe, is about eight hundred dollars a month. To purchase them, you can get a used one for thirty-five thousand and a new one for about forty-nine thousand with a six-hundred-dollar delivery fee. That does not include a power hookup to them. We had called a few weeks ago to request um a quote to bring power to them down at the, down at the treatment plant already. Unfortunately, it was during one of the heavy rain storms and EverSource was very busy and they asked us to put the work request off a few weeks. So I don't have that number right now. These trailers come all all HVAC, they're all wired up, um we just need to put wire, uh power to them. It would be set down at the treatment plant, down next where the Conex boxes are down there now, in the e-waste collection. It it's preference to whether we want it sitting on stone, concrete, uh building code, there is no building uh code for it, whatever it sits on. There would have to be a building permit pulled for it because of the power and because of being office space. We would be able to pour the pad in-house for it, so it would just be the cost of the concrete, probably around fifteen hundred dollars uh worth of concrete. So my question to capital, uh now that you're all here, when we met a few weeks ago, was can the money be used out of the DPW building, new building, do I storage building, feasibility study money, be used to purchase this temporary office space because there was supposed to have been offices in the new building also? So that was my ask for this. So the money is really already there for offices, but can it be used towards this? And in the long term, if and when that building ever does get built, we would own this temporary office space for whoever needs it after that, whether there's another building going under construction or whatever.
I will just ask back, that meeting, capital had voted in support of this.
Yeah, I probably should have. Stop before you went through all that, but thank you. Um we have it on the SDM, so to transfer the funds from from that to to fund that.
Okay.
I don't think we determined it was necessarily exactly in the vein of that original allocation or that original funding, so we put it on, it was a transfer.
Okay, thank you. You just wanted me to hear me say all that, didn't you?
I did. It was very eloquent.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
I think the highway plow truck is the next one.
Yep, uh so currently, uh this would be replaced in a two thousand and sixteen F-350 uh with a plow and a sander on it. The one that we, the one we have now, it's just turned seventy-one thousand miles in this last snowstorm. The the body is rusting out pretty bad on it, we did a Band-Aid repair on it, so it passed the Mass State inspection. It was the same issue that the treatment plant's truck had, the last one before they replaced it. I think it's just a, it's a design of the Ford bodies where it collected all the, all the water and everything, didn't matter how much you would wash it, it got between the panels and and rusted out underneath that. It's it's been a good truck, it it is a good truck, uh but again, it's a plow truck, it's a sanding truck and it's a, they they take a lot of abuse. So that's why I'd be asking to replace that truck this year.
I think there was an outstanding question or two from the last meeting.
I did, I I saw that, I apologize, Deb, I just saw that earlier today. So it, the reason of the rust, like I say, is is the common Ford problem, they have fixed, they have fixed those issues now, there's a different material that the beds are being made out of now. We, the other, one of the other questions was if our trucks are oil undercoated. None of our vehicles have ever been oil undercoated, it's not to say that they can't. I called two places for quotes today after I saw the email from from Deb, um and they haven't got back to me yet. If I had to guess, just off of what I hear, people are paying for their personal vehicles to be done, it probably could be up near six to seven hundred dollars a vehicle uh a year to be undercoated. With this truck, in this truck, it has um a sander in it also. I believe that the sander that is in the current truck now, because we just had replaced the bed chain, the bearings, and the sprockets all on it, there's no reason why that sander can't go into the new truck, and I believe that was probably somewhere around eight thousand, I believe somewhere nine thousand dollars. So that'd probably be like around ninety-five hundred dollars that could come off of this, this was a worst-case scenario quote. And yes, this does have all the newer technology in it that the other one was put in after I came back and asked, asked for more money for the last truck that was purchased.
Like the safety stuff and lighting and, okay. We have about two minutes left.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions on this one before we get to dump truck?
No, let's sit at the dump truck.
Dump truck.
So the the dump truck is a two thousand and fifteen. The reason why I didn't ask for that one first is because we just had to upgrade the sander in that one last year. So we got through the repairs on that one, that truck is around seventy thousand miles also. I don't believe we're going to need to replace that truck with another 550 because we have three of them now. We have a nineteen, a twenty, and a twenty-three. So I think my plans would be to, is to add another, an F-350 pickup for the next year, so it would be similar in price to what this one is. The other truck does have some aging, aging spots on it, um but it just passed, you know, the Mass State inspection, so safety-wise, that one's all right at this time.
So if I understood that, you're saying the first one is the priority, the second one could go another year, probably at least?
Yep.
And this isn't the big dump truck?
No, no, these are just the the 550s, yeah. No, the the big dump truck, I would say, you know, we'll we'll get a few more years out of it. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I think capital did ask Glenn for some information, um so whatever you gather that, you can just email it out to everybody.
Okay, yep, I'll do that.
Anything else for Glenn? Question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure seeing all of you tonight. It's been a pleasure seeing you all.
He says that now.
I know. It's because we didn't say yes or no to anything yet. Uh oh my goodness. She falls, you are up, sir.
And we are out of time.
Good evening, everybody. I've asked Sergeant Pecos to be here, uh obviously, uh he's going to be taking on some more responsibilities, learning the budget process, payroll and things like that, so I've asked him to be here. Chairman Smith, I I notified you prior, but.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, so I will start with, um if it's all right, I will start with animal control. Unless you guys want me to do PD.
I don't have a preference.
No, that's fine.
It's fine.
Animal control, level funded, everything. It's pretty, pretty simple, uh we're in the process of trying to find a new ACO. Whether we hire another position like Art had, or we look to regionalize it. There is currently an add-out, from my understanding, we've had nobody interested. So as of now, PD has been taking on that responsibility and also have been using Athol's uh animal control. They have not billed us. I've spoken with Chief Lundgren and I've asked him to do that, so, because that was the agreement, but he uh doesn't seem to be too concerned about it, so right now, we are using them at at a free, free, but and then there was some confusion, we used Franklin County's ACO a few times too, but I think that was just a breakdown in communication. So that's where we stand with the ACO.
At some point before year end, we'll want to make sure that that is their generosity and not just late billing. You know what I mean? And I know, I just, just to be sure, appreciate it if it is, but.
I I again, I I spoke with Chief Lundgren, uh who I know very well. I told him that we've used his ACO a few times and I've yet to receive a bill and he's, he told me not to worry about it, he will not be billing us. I think if we were using, using their ACO more, we probably would see a bill. I think we've maybe used her two times where she's had to come out, two or three times where she's actually come out, so outside of that, PD has been taking on the responsibility.
Chief, can I just ask, uh moving forward, if there were to be charges, is there a fixed cost associated per call, or is it by the hour, or do we just not know?
I I'd have to look back at the MOU, uh Sluckman Loin, I I believe it was seventy-five dollars for three hours. I think we we presented them with what we were charging Berniston, when when our ACO went to Berniston, and Athol was fine with that, but I I can verify if if you want, but I am pretty sure that's what it is.
Curious, trying to think, moving forward and some of the things that were considered, but thank you. Generalities.
There was a fixed cost, there was a cost structure, it was defined, what it was exactly, that sounds right, but I don't remember.
Thank you.
Anything else on ACO outside of the capital?
There is a capital request, um that was just the budget, the the budget. So the capital request is, obviously, I sent the pictures. I was able to get the ACO vehicle inspected this last time. I I don't necessarily know if it should have been, but it was. When I got underneath and started looking at it a little bit, uh you know, closer, those pictures don't really do it justice, the hole underneath is is rotted out. Question uh from Deb. She had sent me an email and I can go over some of those those answers, is why is the cost so much more than the cruiser? So I I, when I submitted the request, I was trying to figure out my way through the, through through the whole online process. And so I had submitted one estimate for you folks, and then there was a second estimate submitted, so you should have two estimates submitted. One was for electric vehicle, because Deb, you had asked about electric, and one was a a gas vehicle.
Have you emailed that to us?
I said, I put it on that website.
Hold please.
Hang on, I'm not sure we got that.
Is that, the website you're referring to is nothing that capital has access to, so if it wasn't sent either to capital or directly to Brian, we don't get it.
Okay.
It was the submission process, which Brian received or was managing.
Regardless, I can, I it, regardless, I can, I I do have two quotes.
Okay.
Um the electric vehicle was was higher, the electric vehicle was two-wheel drive only, and the MHQ, where the quote came from, they recommended against the electric for an ACO vehicle because of the added weight that you're putting in the vehicle itself, uh and electric vehicles heavier to begin with. The gas one was all-wheel drive and can be rated for the weight that you're putting in it. Why is it more? I don't know, Deb, exactly, other than it's a different vehicle. Um we're we're going with the transit-style van, similar to what Becca at the highway uses, and then Pete got with the um wastewater. So it I, it's it's not the the normal SUV that we that we use for the cruisers. Uh and then there was a question is, what is the HAVIS added on listed at nineteen-eight? That's the kennel for the dog, the the back of it would be outfitted with uh equipment to transport the dogs around and it would be caged off and everything, so that's what that added fee was. Can the outgoing cruiser be outfitted as an ACO vehicle? Yes, obviously, we've done that in the past, uh we definitely could recycle one of our cruisers to be an ACO vehicle, but we would obviously have to look into putting a a cage in it, uh which we can do, and it would be much cheaper. I'd want to put the cage in it, I would want to probably repaint it, and I would definitely take the blue lights out just to avoid any problems and probably mark it with the Town of Irving logo as opposed to the Police Department logo. That's all stuff that we have done though, and could do for much cheaper. The electric option, I just explained that. Uh what is the status of the proposed regional ACO program overseen by Irving? Can the towns potentially participate, equal share the cost? Obviously, yes, we would like the towns to share the equal cost, I mean, I think right now, and and I've been working with um Town Administrator Smith and Sluckman Loin on what this program is going to look like, what's the, what 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 are we going to charge communities? And I have a feeling, just just initial feeling, is is that we're going to present maybe a ten-thousand-dollar price tag to these communities and they might say, ooh, that's awful high. I mean, we're talking about probably communities that put twenty-five hundred dollars towards their animal control position as it is. So I am a little worried that it might be over, you know, the price tag might be too steep for some communities to to get on board. We don't know until we have definite numbers and and present that to to these communities. We're not in any position right now to 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 do that, we we, we've had an initial meeting and 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 we need to schedule another one. And then there was a question as far as how many animal calls have the PD responded to since the former ACO left? How many animal calls have been transported since the former ACO left? So I spent the, uh end of, when, once I got this email, I spent a little bit of time. Um and and from what I could tell, it looks like Art Johnson left us in two thousand and one, sometime around September, end of September. From the logs, it looked like after September twenty-fourth, we stopped using, calling him. So I got you the numbers for two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, and it's pretty ironic. Two thousand and twenty-two, we had fifty-six calls, animal control calls, and two thousand and twenty-three, we had fifty-four animal calls. So um
Okay.
And those, that, those are a wide variety of calls. Uh that could be a barking dog, that could be a hit deer. That could be a barking dog, that could be a hit deer, that could be an injured owl, it, it's a bat.
What's that?
Bear cubs.
Bear cubs, yeah. Bats in people's houses, so it is a wide variety of calls. And, and to be fair, just because we had fifty-four calls, that doesn't mean that we necessarily had to go on that. It could have been, you know, a report of a bear in somebody's yard, and we would tell them, okay, leave it alone, it'll run back in the woods. But, there was fifty-four, fifty-six, fifty-four. And then, two thousand and twenty-two, we had, and I rely on how people put, put information in logs, or how the dispatchers put information in the logs. So, from what I, the best estimate I can give you is that there was potentially ten transports in two thousand and twenty-two, eight definite transports, two possible transports. And then, in two thousand and twenty-three, it looks like three transports, one definite and two possible transports. And now, transports could be anything from transporting an injured owl to a loose dog. We're not transporting pretty much anything other than that, but cats, we did do a transport of a cat, and things like that, so... That's the numbers I have for you folks.
And those, those fifty-four, fifty-six, are those inclusive of any time that we've utilized Athol as well?
Yeah, we did, yes, correct, sir. Chairman Smith, I didn't, I did document in a, actually, I probably did bring it, yeah, I did. In two thousand and twenty-two, it looks like we used Athol twice. And then, two thousand and twenty-three, we used Athol once.
And maybe just, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, for the record, the stuff that Deb sent was on behalf of the Capital Planning Committee, was not just Deb's questions?
Right, no, no, no.
Just so everybody knows, that's listening, those are the Capital, those are the Capital Planning Committee review questions that came out for, for those items.
Correct.
Which was nice enough to put together for us. The, anything else on that for now?
Yes, can I ask, you said that the electric vehicle was higher, can you tell me what the number is?
Absolutely, ma'am, give me one minute. That's the police one? So, the cost for the gas job was eighty-four, six, one, five?
Equipped.
I'm sorry?
Fully equipped.
Fully equipped. And, and again, to your guys' question, the nineteen-eight was, was with that kennel in that, that price. And then, on the electric, it was ninety-two, four, three, eight.
What vehicle are they quoting you, chief, for the electric?
The same, the...
The Transit.
So, it's a Transit?
It's the Ford Transit Cargo T-350 Low Roof. I don't know what the low roof means, but... And one, one question I did have on, when I asked for the electric quote, they listed it here on, on my, and I would be more than happy to send these quotes to you folks. They listed both of them as Ford Transit Cargo T-350, and then on the other one, it's Ford Transit Cargo T-350, but on one quote, it's forty-eight, seven, and on the other quote, it's fifty-six, five. They didn't specify electric on the second quote, so I could always get another quote that really clearly says this is the electric, this is the gas, but there is a difference in the pricing.
If you can send that to everybody, that, at least the electric one, I think we have the gas one, but if you can send us the electric one.
Absolutely.
After the meeting, or tomorrow, whenever, sometime.
Yep.
And, I assume, given there, there would be a pretty substantial cost difference, I'm going to suspect capital would probably like to see what it would cost to outfit a cruiser, an existing SUV?
I have that as well.
Okay, if you can forward that to us as well.
Yep.
Can you tell me the approximate?
Yep.
Do you have this subtotal or something?
Yeah, I apologize, I would have came with this information, it, it did go in that, that system, so, I don't know, maybe I did it wrong. It was a challenge.
It was new this year, so...
Yeah, it was a challenge.
We didn't know we didn't have it, or we would have got it from you before, so...
Well, and then I uploaded stuff, and then I re-uploaded stuff, and then I think I re-uploaded stuff, so, I don't know, it's probably all...
All good.
So, the cruiser, fully equipped, is seven-one, eight-nine, four, forty. And if I had to give you just a...
To refit an existing...
Oh, oh, I apologize.
To take the outgoing cruiser and convert it to an ACU vehicle, do you have a cost for that?
I, I don't, but I, I can get, get one.
Perfect, okay.
I would give, I could give an estimate, it's probably, with paint, taking the lights out, putting a cage in, you're probably somewhere about seventy-five-hundred, I would imagine. We bought a kennel for Laura's cruiser, well, PD's cruiser, but the one that Laura uses for Ziva, and that was a little bit fancier one, and it was seven, seven thousand, something around there, but I think we can get them down around the three, four, maybe we could even find used, I don't know.
Okay. That was going to be my other question. Have you looked at the municipal bid to see if there is a used vehicle the town could purchase?
No, I have not.
Okay.
If we wanted to go that route, though, we'd have to probably have the money appropriated and be looking for the opportunity by the time...
Okay, that makes sense.
Just thinking, we could get a ballpark if there's something out there, but then, until the next one comes.
Yep.
My recommend, if we are going to do that, then it, it would make the most sense just to repurpose the two thousand and seventeen that we have, police cruiser, we're at a hundred-and-fifteen thousand on that.
Miles.
Hundred-and-fifteen thousand miles, yeah. So, that's ACO.
I have a couple other ideas on that, too, so, we'll get together and chat, and then, if anything comes out of that, we can send it around. Anything else on ACO? All right, PD?
All right. Just one minute here. Computer's thinking. All right, so, some of the highlights and challenges that we have had this year, the department is working through staffing concerns. I feel like a broken record. Right now, we have a great group, and I am very hopeful that we stick together. We, when I submitted this, folks, this to you folks, we were in the process of looking for a new co-responder, but we have filled that position. And we continue to navigate post-re requirements. Constantly changing, deadlines are changing, what they want, don't want, is changing. The department has equipment to assist with, with post-re requirements, we're looking to get accredited at some point, we're assuming that we're going to need, need an accreditation, and we've purchased software to help us through, navigate that with our policies and procedures, and our formalizing training, and documenting our training, and so forth. So, we have, we have begun that process to be ahead of the curve when, when Post decides that they want it yesterday. And however, finding the time to, to implement that program and get it up and running has been, has been a challenge. Some of the accomplishments is that the union's contract is finalized. We purchased, through grant money, a LiveScan fingerprint machine, and with the help of IT, that is up and running. Got upgrades to our sidewalks, and, and now we have the, the charge point with the help of Mariah and Town Administrator Smith, and the Highway Department, for all their work that they did there. Department members have been involved in a lot of community outreach programs, the department has partnered with CSO, Quabin House Connect, Anti-Crime Task Force, which is a new one for us, to name a few. Recently, the Anti-Crime Task Force accepted one of our members to be part of the important work that the task force does, which will bring a high level of knowledge and information sharing to our community, and the department addresses crime and drug-related offenses. And so, we're very excited about, about this opportunity. And in fact, our, our officer has hit the streets running, he, he's just doing an amazing work, and I, and I've been complimented already, I think he's only been with them for, what, a month?
Month.
A month, and they are very impressed with him, so, and I plan on reaching out to the Select Board with a, with a recommendation letter. Let's see, goals and initiatives. Obviously, we want to continue to provide a high quality of police into Irving. We're staffing our shifts, I, I would love to do two officers per shift, it just makes sense for officer safety and for the community safety. Let's see, it's also going to give us quicker response times when, when we have two officers on. I would love to re-address the cadet program, I know that there was a lot of discussion about that, and I haven't given up on it. It is a want, but I do, I do think that it would be beneficial to this, to our department and the community. When we are at the six full-time officers, a lot of our shifts are staffed with two, which is something that we really need to, to make a priority. The overtime budget, obviously, will assist in backfilling shifts, and providing officers with the opportunity to receive additional training. Mental health awareness among officers is growing, and its attention and need for resources for officers is improving. We've recently, with the, with, Select Board has approved for us to, to work with first responders, and that's for our officers be able to reach out, you know, when they're on a difficult call. Revenue, currently, the department does collect a fee for processing LTCs and FID cards. We have a twenty-five, it's a hundred dollars, and the town gets back twenty-five dollars of that. And we also collect fees for, you know, somebody wants to come in and solicit, we collect a fee for that. And then, we can also look in, now that we have the LiveScan print machine, we could always look to, to charge a fee for people that want to come in for their fingerprints to be done for, like, applications and stuff. I do know that there are, there are departments that do charge for that, and we have, we don't get a lot of them, but we, we do get a couple, you know, maybe five or six a, a year. Significant budget changes?
Just give you a three-minute warning.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
So, it's already been discussed with the, with the new, the budget numbers. Really, my, my operating budget, I level-funded. We did move a couple numbers around, eliminated some, some accounts, but, but I did level fund it. The wages, obviously, increased with the, the new contract, and that's all contractual. The biggest issue that you guys will see, or the biggest raises, is in overt holiday pay. I, I've had extensive conversation with, with Chairman Smith and Town Administrator Smith on this. We're a little bit different from all the other departments where we work holidays, so, we have to be, we have to fund, not only if they have the holiday off, because they, they receive that pay for the twelve holidays, but also if they're working it, they're receiving in addition to that. So, that's why that number is, is a little bit higher. My vacation time and my, vacation time and another time, I took out of my, the wages.
Sick leave.
Sick leave, thank you. Sick leave and vacation time was deducted from the wage line item, the, the full, the permanent full-time wage item. So, that's pretty much my budget in a, in a nutshell.
Can I just clarify that piece?
Yep.
That you were just saying about the holiday piece?
Yep.
So, in other departments, as you walk through this, you're going to see that that's been backed out, in chief's situation, he's the only department where it was on top of, so there's less of a reduction that you will see in his budget, whereas you will see that in the other departments. So, that's the one anomaly that you're trying to describe.
Correct, yep, you did much better job at it than I did.
And all of the, a lot of these times are breakouts that we didn't have prior to the new budget, the new, the new accounts, so...
So, that's on the budget, and then I can hit the capital request real quick, if you like, am I two minutes left, one minute left? None minutes?
Chief Wonka, you mind if we start a couple minutes late on you?
Hello, fun.
Thank you, sir. See, police and fire do work together sometimes. I couldn't resist. I have one question before you do, you mentioned software maintenance for the LiveScan expires within fiscal twenty-five.
Correct.
It looks like the software maintenance line in the last, in the prior year had four or five thousand left in it, we've already spent more than we did last year, is that going to have enough, do we know, do we think we're going to come up short to continue that coverage?
I should be, I should break even, the reason why we had so much more is because the state was helping us pay our Citrix fee, our, our...
Oh, yep, yep.
And now, we're paying the full, full fee on that, so where we were paying around two, now we're paying over four for that.
Okay.
And then, we also added the, the software for, to help us with post-re requirements, and then, we also had to add a K-nine, tracking, report-tracking system, so, that number should, should probably be spent this year, and it's, and it's complete.
And cover LiveScan?
No.
Okay.
LiveScan is covered for this year, moving forward next year.
November twenty-four, it expires? Well, hey, just look into that and get back to us, if it expires before the end of fiscal twenty-five?
Okay.
On what that additional cost would be?
Okay.
If you don't have it somewhere else in the budget? Please.
Yep.
Vehicle?
So, the question had been brought to my attention, are these mechanical issues with the cruiser being replaced? So, we keep having an issue with the check-engine light, yes, I address it, yes, we'll drive it for a little while, and then the light comes back on. It's one of those lights where the, the vehicle runs fine, but obviously, when we go to get it inspected next, if the check-engine light's on, it's not going to pass, so, I'm just trying to get it fixed, it just popped back on again. I've tried to use local mechanics to, you know, obviously, they cut us a little bit better price, I'm thinking it's just going to have to go to Ford, and have Ford figure out what, what it is, why it keeps popping on. But, we, yes, we, we want to fix it. Why does the cruiser need replacement? Like I said, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand miles, that's driving miles, that's not what, what it actually has on it for running miles, you could probably double, if not triple that for, for running miles. And it's also on the, the, whatever, whatever the big, long, projected twenty-five-year plan is, is that it was, it was due for replacement this year. Does it need to be a, no, I mean, we, it's a good running car, we can, we can keep it, we could repurpose it as an ACO vehicle, the only reason why I bring it to your attention is because we have had some maintenance issues with it, and it is, it is due for, for replacement. And then, please provide any, the maintenance records. I did get the maintenance records for you folks. I won't bore you with all the numbers, but I have two thousand, FY twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, I can, I can email those to you.
Perfect.
But, in twenty-three and four, we have spent a lot of money on, on car four, the replacement car. I mean, we've had a couple bills up in the thousands, two thousand, and then eight hundreds, nine hundred, so, but I will get, get a copy of the, of the, the records to you, the maintenance records.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect. If you could maybe just estimate, you don't have to be exact, but just estimate how much downtime we have for that vehicle, when it's in service, too, is it normally a couple days, or is it often longer, and, just to get a sense of the downtime?
When, when, when it goes down, it's going down for usually three to a week, three days to a week, is typically what we're seeing. We get it there, I mean, like any, any place, you know, you get it there, they, they diagnose what the problem is, then they got to get the parts. None of these mechanics, none of these, these places have parts on, on hand anymore, so you're waiting for them to be brought in, then you're waiting for the work. So you're waiting for them to be brought in, then you're waiting for the work and then you're getting the car back. So we're looking at anywhere from three, three, three days to a week that that car's down.
Mine? Thank you. Other?
I'd just say if we're going to, just going back to the repurposing this as an ACO vehicle, we'd, we'd want to keep that as part of the conversation is, we're, would be repurposing a car that would be facing significant repair expenses to keep it on the road as we go. And I know the difference between a few thousand dollars and eighty thousand dollars is massive, but if it's down and unusable, at what cost depending on the call for service? So I'd just like to keep that in mind as we continue the conversation on the capital.
And I would just like to point out just real quick, too. It is important to have an ACO vehicle equipped with the ACO, I mean, the proper equipment. Um, you know, we, we, say one of our officers responds to a loose dog and we, we put that dog in one of our cruisers. Now we're putting a dog that we don't know anything about with our equipment, you know, our own personal gear. The officer stops, makes a turn, the dog slides off of the, the seats, because we don't put nice comfy seats for where the dog sits, because prisoners are usually sitting there. And it falls down on the floorboard, breaks a leg, now it's our responsibility. So I mean, you know, you might say, well, we only transport eight dogs or whatever and, but it takes one that we break a, a leg on and then, you know, now we're the bad guys. We're always the bad guys, it seems like, but now we just broke somebody's dog's leg, so. It is something to think about.
Liability there.
There, there is a liability there, so.
Good. Other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Chief Wonka, thank you. Thanks to Finance Committee, we put one up there, a spare.
What, what would we like to cover first?
Uh, your choice. I had you up for fire and EMS first, but you are welcome to do EMD if you like.
Honestly, I mean, eh, the Emergency Management Department was, would probably be the easiest one.
Okay.
Um, I didn't do a narrative on that one, an explanation on that one. Um, you will see a reduction in the wages. That item was moved over, uh, along with the fire, in the, in the Fire Chief's contract, so there's a reduction in the Emergency Management Department Director's wages over to, uh, on the fire side, so. But everything else was level funded, I believe. There's too many budgets in here. Any questions on that?
No.
Just to, the wages were absorbed by the Fire Chief contract?
Correct.
And the Fire Department wages.
Yeah, it was added, it was added into my, into, into the Fire Chief contract, um, so the wages just moved over onto that side of the house. I don't, I don't think it reflects it in this year's budget as of yet.
Not yet.
I think we were waiting for that, that whole...
Right.
That whole thing to go over.
Um, but yeah, I think we just moved it because we moved the responsibility, so. If it's... So on the part of the responsibility of the Fire Chief, then it's the Fire Department call. Like, i- it's absorbed in there rather than a separate department.
No, that tracks.
We can break it out, I suppose, but that's not how we did so far.
We don't break the police chief's oversight of the ACO into the ACO budget, so.
Right. Once it became a separate position, it was a...
Right.
Separate appointment, now it's just a responsibility of...
Right. Still the new guy trying to learn.
I totally understand. It's the first time we've done it, I think, so.
Correct. Yeah, this is the first year it's been broken out, I think, I believe. Any questions on Emergency Management?
Good.
Not for me, thank you.
Uh, so the Fire Department budget, we, I, I took a long, deep dive, looked back at, uh, the last seven years, um, of the budget since we've, since we've had the full-time staff, um, uh, specifically highlighting the account numbers that were... So it was a tricky year because we, we did have the accounting changeover, uh, the budget was definitely broken out a lot, a, a lot more, which, which I like because it, it does show where, where the money's going. It gave us an opportunity to take a look at the line items that were consistently overspent, so those were reduced. Um, wages, with, the wage line item was broken, broken down and that was increased based off of, uh, the projected step, step increases that are coming minus, uh, any COLA that you guys decide are, are going to come along. So the big reductions in that, you'll see the, the telecommunications wired and wireless services, uh, moving around a little bit with the, the thousand-dollar reduction in that. Um, uh, the heating oil one, uh, has been historically overfunded, uh, so we reduced that one by, looks like fourteen hundred. Uh, we added the propane line item. Um, that's a guesstimate because the, the, the generator to fire station has run off of propane. We historically don't fill it. Uh, this year we, we ran it for three days and we had a power problem there, so it's going to be, need to be filled, but I'm just trying to guesstimate on, on that, on that line item there. Um, the increased lines for like office supplies, building supply materials, building services, uh, the software subscriptions, that, those were all broken out of either the expenses or the equipment line items. It was, it was all lump, lumped something there. We also took a deep dive into the pump testing, the hose testing, and the, and the ladder testing, decided that if we stretch those out over the year, we can offset them for every other year, so we'll do the pump testing one year and then the hose testing the other. That should stretch it out thirteen to fourteen months and, and give us a relief on, on the budget side. So you see an overall reduction in the expense, in the expense lines of like sixteen-five on that. Um, the one thing that I will drop on you now is I did get the numbers today. Obviously, every single year we have this conversation and we're still waiting on the ambulance assessments coming in from the town. Orange was nice enough to send them to me today, so I, I have true numbers. I had originally budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for ambulance services for Orange and Northfield. Orange's numbers came in today, so I need to increase that line to a hundred and six, nine, seven, nine, sixty-three. So it's a, almost a seven thousand dollar, uh, increase on that, roughly.
From what you proposed, but it's...
What's that?
From what you propose, what you have in here in the draft...
Correct.
But it's even more year-over-year.
Yeah, it's a little seven thou- about, about seven thousand dollars. We are, I think, in the final, uh, we're in the final leg of the finalization for the regionalization study out of, out of Northfield EMS. Uh, they were asking for a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, assess, assessment fee on that one, uh, for the first, at least for the first year, see where that goes. They're applying for a grant to offset their budget, um, and that's, that's still going through the works on that part, but we're still getting phenomenal service from, from both services. Um, the response times are, are great and I have no complaints on that.
So it's about, that's really just, the assessments are up about thirty thousand between the two towns.
Correct.
And if I recall, part of reducing your expenses about sixteen was to try to help offset that?
Yes.
On, on the fire side.
Correct.
I have to ask, equipment and expense undefined. I know their old accounts were dropping off, but is it just reallocated to other more...
Uh-huh.
Better-aligned accounts? They were old accounts?
We currently have an expense line and equipment line and, and conversations with Brian, um, what we were, what we were spending out of that money, um, definitely broke down into, into better line items, so.
Okay. So that was, the first half of that is what they used to be called? Undefined, it's just that we don't have them now?
If you go up to the middle of the expense section, you'll see twenty-three through twenty-four of no activity, but those brand-new line items have requested FY twenty-five, those didn't exist before. A lot of those were attributed to the ones that we're phasing out.
Got it. Uh, questions? Comments, concerns?
Not really, yeah.
And no capital request for this year?
No, I don't. I did want to speak to that a little bit, though. So we, I, I spent a long time looking at the, the twenty-five-year plan, um, drawing numbers from people. And like I've been saying, so I, I, I have a, I have a new truck. We've pushed off the new truck year after year after year after year after year. Uh, we rolled out the brand-new, uh, vehicle, um, what do we want to call it?
Well, the draft policy?
Yeah, the draft policy. Uh, so if, if you were to take all of my vehicles minus the, the three new ones, um, I, I would need to replace the entire fleet just based off of, uh, years. At, at a million ball, dollars a pop, that's just unattainable for, uh, the Fire Department. So I did draft them, now I'm going to send it in to you guys. I believe you saw that. After I, after I, I, I drafted that up, um, I had some conversations with a few of the manufacturers. The prices are going up, uh, about ten percent a year. Um, we're looking at twenty-four-month build times on these trucks, so. The conversation came about, so the last truck we bought, we had a, we, we realized a three percent savings when we, if we paid for it at the time of order. So before, before anybody touched the vehicle, we paid them for it, uh, and that, we realized a three percent savings on that. With the cost of builds twenty, twenty-four months at, you know, uh, as it stands now, ten percent increase on a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar fire truck, you're looking about eight-hundred-thousand next year, nine-hundred-thousand. So we're, we're getting up into the million-dollar, into the million-dollar mark with that stuff. So if we could, um, have a conversation at some point in time about allocating the funds for that, um, and not paying for them until figuring out when we can order the truck, but not paying for it when, until it comes in, uh, we would realize, we'd lock in the price at that and, and, and realize probably a ten to twenty percent, uh, savings on it.
Am I following, are you saying we can lock it in at build ti- at order time?
Correct.
Even if we don't pay upfront? Whereas it used to be a discount, now it's just holding the price?
Correct. Which, it's a realized savings to the, to the town because we're not paying for the ten to fifteen percent increase, plus our money's still sitting in the bank and, and one, one to two percent interest rate.
Well, that sounded better than I would expect in today's time, so I just want to make sure I was understanding it.
Yeah.
But we still have to budget now. To make...
Right.
We'd have to budget to make it in twenty-four months.
Correct.
For we make the commitment. Then we're committed that we're going to have it then.
Right. It would hold that money up in theory, if there's a, yeah. We'd have to be able to issue a purchase order against the appropriation.
Yeah.
To be able to get, make the commitment.
Took me a long time to, to get it straight in my brain, too.
Yep.
Trying to figure out how to do that. So you've, you figured a, a two-year build time. If you, if you're looking to get the truck in twenty-twenty-nine, you're ordering it in twenty-twenty-seven, locking it at twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-seven prices. The, the trucks are currently running good. I mean, I'll be honest with you, they're larger trucks, uh, they do take more in maintenance, so every single time they go up there, just for their general maintenance, once, once a year is about a thousand dollars, anywhere from nine-hundred to fifteen-hundred dollars. We did have, uh, some, some large expenses on one of the trucks this year. Uh, we lost a turbo during, uh, during the pump testing, which was, I, I guess is good. You're, you're doing the pump test, so you're realizing any of the problems. That was about a four or five thousand dollar repair on that one. It was down for, I think it was down for close to a week on it. But the intent is to replace two trucks with one, uh, realizing a, a savings to the town over the long haul, uh, you know, at a million dollars apiece in five or six years. Shedding, shedding one truck will save us another million dollars when you're, when you're going to replace them.
Not disagreeing with you. A thousand dollars or even five or six a year sounds like a lot, but that's like two hundred years, I think, to get your million dollars back.
Yeah.
Or twenty, I don't know, it's a while.
And, and our oldest truck, I mean, the one, the two that I want to replace, that I would replace would be nineteen-eighty-nine and ninety-six, um, so. I mean, they've, they've senior years. They're definitely, uh, they're, they're still good trucks. We don't have any issues with them. It's not like I'm concerned that they're breaking down each and every time. I just wanted to make you guys aware that, you know, these, these prices aren't coming down. Northampton just bought a ladder truck that was two million dollars. Five years ago, Turner's got a truck that was less than a million.
Guess I'm glad we don't have ladder trucks.
Yeah.
Gee, could you just tell me, you, you're saying you're replacing two trucks with one. Is that going to shorten the lifespan of the one truck we're getting because it's being purposed more or...
I would say yes and no. Um, it, it's obviously going to get more miles, more use, because it'll be the only truck that's going out, you know, from that station. Uh, honestly, the amount, amount of times that they go out is, is minute compared to, I mean, the eighty-nine has less than twenty thousand miles on it, you know, twenty thousand road miles. If I looked at the engine hours, I'm sure it's up there, because when, when we go to, when we go to a fire and pump it for six hours, it's, it's got some hours on it, but. We have a very robust maintenance plan, so our, my guys are on it as soon as there's, as soon as they notice any issue, they're, they're constantly looking at the trucks. If something, if, if something seems off, they're taking a look at it, they're, they're bringing it up to Rose Ledge, they're bringing it up to the mechanic to have them take a look at it, they're, they're on the, they're on the stuff. The problem with the newer, it seems to be with the newer equipment is there's a lot more electronic sensors in them. There's a, there's just a lot more electronic stuff that goes wrong with them and we all have new cars and...
Mm-hmm. So what you're saying is we shouldn't replace the eighty-nine or the ninety-six?
It, you know, it's been, it's been a juggle all the way across the boards, because it doesn't have the safety features that the new vehicles have for, for the people, but again, just like you said, it, they're not costing us a lot of money in maintenance in, in the, in the long haul, so. But when they do go, they're going to go.
Okay.
But yes, to answer that question, it, it would get more use, it would get more miles. Uh, I'm a firm believer in having a multipurpose vehicle instead of just having a, so what I want to do is replace the tanker, uh, so, w- we, we currently run two pumpers. Um, one's fifteen-hundred gallons, one's a thousand. I want to replace it with a two-thousand-gallon, uh, pumper tanker that fits both roles in one truck. It'll shorten our fleet, it'll, it'll save us in the long haul, it'll, I think, I believe it'll save us in maintenance, because we're not repairing two trucks at, every single year. We're not, we're not having two pumps tra- tested, we're not doing all the hose layout on two trucks. It, it should have that all the way across the boards, but it would add, it would add time and effort on, on the, on the vehicle itself.
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Were there any questions on the twenty-five year? Because I did, I did add it out and I added a set of jaws on there if anyone wants to have a...
The Capital Planning Committee will probably get back to you on the twenty-five year when...
Yes.
They get to that.
All right, so we haven't gone that far.
Twenty-five year is still a work in progress.
Okay.
Appreciate you submitting it, though.
Yes, very much so.
One of, one of few.
Any other questions?
No.
We're good. Thank you, chief.
Run while you get the chance.
They never run, they walk swiftly.
Right.
Move with a purpose, I believe, we used to say.
Determined and... Oh, Bean, come on up.
Look at him hiding back there, hoping we don't see him.
Me?
Yeah, you.
Yeah, this man.
No comment.
Yeah, we just made back three, three of the five minutes we were behind before.
All right.
We're trending.
Um, up to you. We had wastewater first, but whichever one you want to start with.
Your choice. Good to go.
Wastewater it is.
Okay, um, just go over narratives first, you want? Is that what you want to do? All right. So, um, for FY twenty-four, our highlights and challenges were, um, finishing up a lot of jobs and projects that we had. I have written down finalizing a transformer install at Route Two Pump Station. So you all know, it is done, the meter's in, we're on our own. Um, so that is complete. And then, um, we're also currently upgrading all the pump stations, putting in emission alarm systems. Farley's now up and going. Uh, we'll be working on renovators next, and then the last one will be Route 2. And then the other thing, challenges we have for the year, we repaired some pump repairs at Arch Street Pump Station. We were doing the inspections of the sewer lines and the manholes for the asset management. We did that work with Time Bond. Um, and the other challenges were uh meeting the permit limits. There's a little bit of an issue with the INI that we have coming over from Montague. So that's been really challenging because it's wreaking havoc as to how we have to run the plant to prevent having problems. And then also working with DEP and EPA on the new regulations and compliance rules. They're changing a lot of them. And there's a lot of programs they want us to start getting up and running, uh, you know, collection system management program, uh, the O and M for that. And then also running a pre-treatment program for POTW number two. Our goals, initiatives is uh keep making the permit limits for POTW number one and number three. And keep the uh pre-treatment program going as good as it is now with POTW number two. We're going to still try to increase our percent solids. That's the challenge with the INI that we send out for disposal. So that's always a, a work in progress, tinkering around with how we're running the plant. And we've been working with Montague on the side here and there, giving them some advice to help try to fix this INI problem. So it'll also benefit us. Um, right now with it, it's, you know, it's increasing our operating costs between, you know, chemicals, electricity, disposal of the sludge. Uh, so we're working on that with them. And then uh we will also be working on sewer instructions, sewer structure inspections and repairs. And then our challenge every year is keep obtaining our TCHs and keep all our licenses valid through courses and schools. So revenue, revenue is going to be a touchy subject at some point. We do get revenue from Montague, the fees for just taking in their sewage. Um, there is some overage fees that they have to pay, so there's a little extra revenue there that'll be coming. And at some point, currently I'm working with the help of Jackie to try to develop a, a plan for possibly if we ever have to do sewer rates. I know it's something a lot of people are not going to like, but it is a way of generating revenue to help offset the operating costs if we're going to run it like a true enterprise fund. And right now, uh, relief for our budget, the, the only significant change, uh, there was an overall reduction of a total of about 31,229 dollars just from uh, I worked with Brian, we shifted some stuff around. We did cuts where we, you know, had uh extra money. And that is about that for that.
Hang on a second. I think we're, um, that, that math mixes operating and special appropriation capital project stuff, right?
The way it does.
Because we didn't subtotal this, I think some of the other ones we subtotald on operating, but this did not. Separate from capital, I mean, separate from special appropriation, container appropriation.
I can subtotal it that way if you'd like to. Keep in mind, this department also has additional debt service that other departments don't carry.
Right.
But yes, I could subtotal if that's the way you'd like it.
I'm, without scrolling back, I thought some of the others might have, but I'm just, just getting at the operating costs is not down. There's a $75,000 reduction in the special and continuing appropriations. But there's about a 40,000 increase in the rest of the operating costs, which is salary and wage, really.
All the departments dispossue the same way? So if you'd like that change, I can make it across the board.
I'll look at everybody else. It's, I, so what you're telling me is all of them subtotal salary, wage, and then special appropriations and then everything, but not ordinary expenses?
They sub total salary, wage, ordinary expenses, debt service, special articles.
This one doesn't, oh, oh, it does, but it's zero. That's why it's not looking like it is to me. I'm sorry.
Right. So in this case, based on what you all just were describing, there is an increase to salary and wage.
Yep.
It's level funded for ordinary expenses, level funded right now for debt service.
So decrease on special. I'm misreading it. Yeah, yeah. The, the comment about a reduction in operating and I was looking at ordinary, thinking it wasn't totaling. It's just ordinary is flat.
Right, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. That's me. I'm good.
Okay, and uh?
I'm good with the reports. I was reading them right.
Let's keep them consistent.
Yes, absolutely.
And I have just for capital, the one capital request was for the fencing at POTW number one. To include the tanks with uh mainly for safety, security, with all the new stuff that's going on in the world. It's, we need to prevent unauthorized access into that area.
And I apologize, you somehow got left off my list to send questions to you. So thank you for being a mind reader and knowing that we had questions for you and just answering them.
Little bir- little birdie.
There seems to be a lot of those around. Just a, maybe a comment and then a, a thought. Montague rates is something that is up for renewal, I'll call it, renegotiation. And is a topic that we will address and look at and overages and understanding that cost separately, which I think you alluded to, but obviously we'll need your help with that. Understanding kind of how much of that INI and other things are driving costs specifically coming over as we look at what that rate will be. We'll work on that. We've got some time, but yeah. And then to your note about costs, which I first read to be for the INI, Montague, Millers, et cetera, but really a model of what it would look like if it was a rate payer in town. I think I'll ask, appreciate you starting the work. Do we want to see those numbers? See proposals on what those models might look like?
I think we should.
I mean, I'd rather have the information if you ask, so we have some sort, or my thoughts of how we can go about doing it, so.
That's what we asked for and you started working on. I appreciate that. I, what I'm saying is, you know, it may not be the funnest thing to talk about, but I think we want to see them, right?
Yep.
So.
Yep.
Can I ask Pete, what scenarios are you looking at for that?
Um, actually I worked with um Montague and um Northfield seem to have a pretty good uh system as how you rate the, the houses, if it's a single or a double dwelling or an apartment building complex. So I'm just kind of working, me and Jackie are working with what I got from Chelsea. And it's, and it's a pretty good setup formula. I mean, you can do it multiple different ways. You can figure out what you want to generate and it'll break it down and tell you how much to charge each residence. Um, or you can, you can do it multiple ways. You can say, I want to make, you know, an extra 100,000. And, and you just enter the numbers and it, it'll print it right out for you.
Okay, cool.
I assume it's like various rates per?
Yep.
Pete? Like various rates per different types of dwellings and such, right?
Yes.
Um, so I've been working with Michelle Turner, who is the treasure collector over in Northfield. And um they have their, a small sewer system over there. Chelsea Little's also the sewer person over there. So, um, it's a, a little simpler system than what Montague uses because Montague has five villages and they have water districts and it's quite complicated. So Michelle has kindly shared what um Chelsea Little has formed up for Northfield. And I think that Pete hasn't looked at it yet because I'm still working on it. We had to create it from scratch. And we have a hybrid of, some people are on water, some people are not.
That'll be.
Most everybody's on sewer, but not everybody's on sewer, so it's taking some time. But it would be like that, so it would be a factor of one for a single family. A duplex would be something else. And then a di- a different percentage for um like an apartment complex. Or if you are a mill and, you know, based off of the number of bathrooms that you might have in there and that sort of thing. So we're, Michelle and I were talking and we were going to model it after Northfield's because it was a little simpler to manage. Um, and then um Pete could do the same thing, put in a, a factor and then you would, how much it would be, would generate, so.
So I guess then I'm confused. Where do the sewer rates come from and who sets them? Because that just sounds like the assessors and the tax collectors doing everything. So is it the water wastewater department who does this or is it the assessors and the tax collector who does that?
Sewer commissioners have the authority to set rates.
So all that we were asked to from the assessor's office was to create the database, which runs off of all the properties in, in Irving. And then um Michelle, well, uh, the tax collector would be the one that would send out the bills because it would be part of the VEDAR database.
We'd have to build an entire section, our utility system. Right now we have a water unit within utilities, but that's it. So we'd have to completely from scratch build.
Michelle thinks we can actually use the same utility system in VEDAR for water.
We may be able to, yeah.
Manipulate the data for, okay.
So that's what we're working on. And then the assessors come into play only if uh something new comes in and a piece of land turns into a house and then it's hooked up to the sewer system.
The two systems talk.
Yep.
Okay, I get, I'm talking less about the technical.
That's why they're evolved.
Like, is it Pete who will be looking at the program and determining the rates?
No.
Or?
No.
No. So today, yeah, hang on. We're the select board and we are the water commissioners. We are not the sewer commissioners, although we probably are de facto. But we don't really ha- like do much as that because we don't rate pay.
Okay.
If we implemented a rate payer system, then sewer commissioners would set the rates like the water commissioners set the water rates today. The reason we don't ever talk about sewer commissioners is just because we don't set rates in that way. We just tax and, and have a contract with Montague.
Okay.
So at the end of the day, the select board, assuming they were the water, uh, the sewer commissioners would set the rates. They'd be based on inputs on how do we meet a budget plan that either level funds or has some additional revenue to go into the enterprise account for future costs.
Right.
And, and back into that with a model that Pete is building.
Okay.
With the help of Jackie, the assessors and the tax collector on how would you approach rates with different type?
So we'd be unique though because we have a water system on this side of town. And usually water and sewer are based on usage, correct?
Correct.
On the opposite side of town, we're just going to go on sewer, so how would you get?
We wouldn't do it that way.
I, I would think the best way would be a, a, a set fee, whether you're on town water or not. That's my opinion. After talking to Chelsea, how they do it, how they do it in Northfield. Because there's a lot of towns here in Western Mass. I mean, the water system doesn't go to every house.
That's true, even in Montague, there are, right, there are houses on sewer and not on water.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's why they have a water district and they have a sewer districts that are separate and I, I think we'd keep them separate. Most likely. I mean, maybe there's a different recommendation, but we'd probably keep them separate and I think that's what we want to hear. It's what we're telling you. We'd like to hear what those models might look like. And I think for guidance, because backing into understanding what rates might look like and such is going to be budget. Excluding Montague as is for now, because we don't know if that will change, let's assume it's the same. Would we be looking for just a level funded model that gets us the operating budget, the costs today? Or would be looking to have some additional revenue for the enterprise account? Just to give some guidance on what, how to ballpark numbers.
I know this will be unpopular among the constituents, but I would say we need an enterprise fund because these systems will require upgrades and repairs and we better be in a position to pay for them when they come up, so.
And we have one, but you mean like budgeting to put more back into it than just what it costs to operate?
I agree with Jim.
Ideally, you got to grow, so you got to have the room to grow, so.
If you grow, you get more rate payers.
Alright, generate more revenue, zoom capital projects.
Uh, do we want to put anything out there for a number to just like plus 10% above the budget or, I don't know, $50,000, $100,000? Is there, is there just something? This is all just spitballing to get some, you know, some idea on what this will look like, but just to give Pete some direction, somewhere to start.
Could I just comment?
Please.
People watching, some people watch regularly, some people never watch. I suspect more people will be watching than ever before. And I've been, it's difficult for me, I've been sitting here being quiet, I don't want to take up everybody's time. But we're asking this year, which we's not asked so much in the past, how much does it cost for the leak pickup? How much does it cost to throw away a television? How much does it cost to, to run the treatment plants? And, and to set up a fund where we can repair the, the sewage system on the east side of town because they don't have sewer there. And they still have pumps and pipes and stuff needing to be fixed. If we get to the end of this process and there's enough money to fund without raising, having an override, if there's enough money to fund the whole budget and have the streetlights and free trash pickup and three, everything goes. If there's enough money, then we don't have to look at all this sewer rates and pay to throw the trash bag stuff. But if there's not enough money and if people are, it's your money. If you do not want the money on the tax rate, which would take less money out of your pocket. If you don't want the money on the tax rate, the only alternative is to charge some fees for the services that have to be provided. You can't just say, we're not going to run the treatment plant. You can't just say, we're not going to pick up the trash. You can say that, but it's going to cost you a whole lot of money just hire a trash pickup guy. So that's why we're having this discussion. So when we get toward the end, we can determine, do we need to ask for these fees? We, we never paid before because people don't want it on the tax rate. That's my understanding. So, correct me if I'm wrong, so.
I don't think you're wrong. I think that sounds about exactly what we're doing, why we're asking the questions.
Thank you.
So you asked the question about what that add-on number would be. I would say, you know, if you use the number 10%, well, we're preparing to replace our system in total every 10 years. I don't know if there are repairs and upgrades. 10%.
For over 10 years. Operating costs, not replacement costs. Sorry. I just was surprised when you said that because I think of the cost of replacing some of the stuff to be astronomically more than the annual operating cost, but I could be wrong. I'm no expert on it.
No, it would be.
No.
I mean, 10% and a, and 100,000 are pretty close.
They, they are. I'm realizing that. It's about a million dollar budget.
So I would say maybe for the first blush, let's, I would say 10%?
Yeah. I mean, once, once we have finished working on what we're working on, you can just enter that amount. How much, you know, if you want to generate 10%, this is where it'd be, this is what it would charge for like a single dwelling. That's what their fee would be. For a duplex, that's what it'd be, and on and on.
And, and I brought that up because I think, at least personally, and I think for this group from exercises during the override discussions and stuff, we're going to want to understand what is a, what is a single family home cost, what is a apartment building cost? What are the real costs that people are going to incur if we switch to that? So just giving you a, what number do we plug in while budget plus 10%?
Right. We're going to need to know that. It's not going to be popular, but.
We are running a little over still. Is everybody good? Running another 15 to 20 minutes over tonight? Okay.
I'd say for our first run, that's pretty good.
I'm pretty impressed, I got to say. I'm taking notes just because maybe it informs next year, but yeah, it's, we're doing really well, everybody, I, I got to say.
So on with water?
Are we good on wastewater? Was there anything else? Uh, anything on the capital request? Everything good for now? Sounds like yes, water?
Yep.
Okay, so on the water department's side for FY24 challenges was uh to get the tank mixer project underway. And we've had our first pre-construction meeting today. Went well. I think it's going to be an, an easy project to get done. The only thing we're going to have to work with would be the weather if all of a sudden we get a bad snowstorm. As it is right now, they, if the mixer's been ordered, um, they're waiting for it to come in. And once that comes in, uh, the contractors are ready to go. They want to get this done, get it over really quick. And it shouldn't take long to do the project. Um, a couple of days is what they're looking at. So, um, the other challenges, uh, which is why we're doing a mixer, is uh help keep the bacteria hits down. We don't need any of those because of the hot weather trends. We did replace a few hydrants this year and gate boxes on water valves. The other challenges continue our PFAS testing programs, collecting samples for VOCs and SOCs. And, and generally the overall maintenance on the distribution system. We started to work on an exercise program, work on the gate valves, clean them out, replace any of the covers that need to be replaced. We started last year pressure washing and painting the hydrants. We're hoping to get it all finished this year. That's the goal, you know, which we should be able to do. And then we're working with Time Bond on the lead service line inventory replacement project. Then obviously the goals for the year coming up would be to continue the LSL inventory lead service line program. Start up a gate valve exercising program, which is all, these are all things that DEP wants to see us to start moving on. Do a leak detection program. We, we have the equipment now. We've been. Do a leak detection program, we, we have the equipment now, uh, we've been playing around with it, we'll start that this summer, just basically going through the whole system, checking everywhere for any leaks. And then, uh, the other thing would be to, uh, keep our TCHs going, keep our licenses valid. And also install emission alarms at the water tank and down at the well pump house. Uh, the, the radio receiver that we have now, it's Radio Read, that's, it's going to junk and it's actually costs more to fix that than to put in the emission system, so. Uh, that's what we're gonna do there. Uh, as far as revenue goes, we have our taxpayers pay their sewer, uh, water rates, I mean, and, um, the other thing to do would be, uh, see if we wanna, it's up to the commissioners, raise the, the rates there to generate a little bit more revenue. As far as, uh, changes in the budget, uh, basically the, the increase was basically on salaries. Other than that, um, everything is level funded, we did shift some stuff around with new accounts, and that's it.
Just a question on the salary and wage, the, um, the new holiday vacation, doesn't look like that got taken out of salary? Just added in? Isn't it normally just a shift because we didn't call it out separately? So it should be a deduction from salary wage?
It was. Pull that up. There's more staff in that department budget thing you're thinking of, I assume? Collection staff, accounting staff?
No, my, my, well, the question is directly related to permanent salary and wage was exactly flat year over year, which doesn't, unless it just happens to be up by the exact amount that we shifted to holiday vacation and sick. I'm surprised it didn't go down some with moving stuff into those separate callouts. If that makes sense.
It did, there's, so there was a line item that was in the 200s before that shouldn't have been there, I don't understand why. So every year I'd manually move it up to the 100s, though in our accounting system it presented differently. That has had additional capacity in it, so as wages have adjusted, we've just been eating away at that capacity.
Okay.
And the accountant services and the collection services that are attributed to those, they had their own separate line items, they've all been consolidated into one. So we're just working off that same balance. There's just been capacity in the maintenance area. There has been sufficient to absorb a lot of that, um, in terms of the holiday vacation sick that is attributed to the three, uh, three staff members that qualify for those benefits.
Right, but that was in, in FY '23, that was in permanent salary wages and temp wages. In '24, same, and in '25 it's broken out, so wouldn't it be at least a reduction of some? Plus, we have an excess, it looks like in budgeted versus actuals, at least from '23, we had a significant. We had like 50% more in the permanent salary wage line than we actually expended.
If you would like me to deduct it from there, absolutely.
I'm just, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't yet, I will come back and talk more about that unless others have a thought or a question, it's just one of those things that jumped out a little bit. Come back to it, or we wanna do anything, can I? Come back to it?
Come back to it.
Okay. I don't know how this budget compares to revenues, we probably should take a look at that as water commissioners at least. Is looking at where in the prior years have our rates generated versus what we've been expending to understand how much surplus or not have we been functioning in the enterprise fund. So, we can do it for '23, I know for '24 the bills aren't out yet, but, or the second bills aren't out yet. When we get, talking about that. Okay. Other water questions?
Not right now.
Okay. Next up was landfill solid waste and property inspections, and I put your name on there as well, Pete, because I think of landfills and I think of you. And I think of solid waste and I think of you, but, okay, that sounded awful.
If I only had feelings.
Wow. Okay, I think of you because of conversations with Time and Bond when we talk about landfills. So really, I think about Time and Bond and then I know you're our, our, our mouthpiece for that.
That's some good backpedaling right there.
And solid waste, well, yes, I do think of you, and no, not all of that stuff is you, but. So, uh, you're welcome to stay for some of it, um, and I know Brian will, will help with some of it too.
So, we're going next. Property inspections or solid waste, solid waste?
Landfill solid waste, yeah, please.
So we're looking at.
Just had to get there.
Looking at, um, categories 433 and 439. 433 is your solid waste program, that's gonna be your residential collection, all of the different disposal types as we were discussing earlier today. That includes bulky, that includes recycling, the almost anything goes program, the e-waste, the scrap metal, the actual disposal services of recycling and trash, and then hazardous waste services. Um, we do have a contractual increase that's happening with Casella, your hauler, so we do have to put that into the budget, that's about a $10,000 increase. And we have a few of their costs that have gone up, we've tried to reduce, um, in the land for trash disposal. Uh, we were able to keep those costs lower using the sticker program. So, uh, we have a little capacity there that we wanna move around. So, overall, we do still have a, um, an increase in the department because we have an increase in landfill, um, monitoring. As we experienced at Maple Avenue, it's the landfill that we're responsible for testing and monitoring every year, and that cost went up $9,000 this year. So that had to go into the budget, so, um, those changes in the trash contract, even with the reductions I was able to put into some, some other line items accompanying with the $9,000 increase on the landfills, it nets to a $15,500 increase for the whole department.
And when I think of solid waste and solids, that's in the enterprise, it's not in here at all, correct? Just for my, that's in the wastewater enterprise, the disposal of solids from, from that solid waste.
Right.
Can I ask for figuring out, there's a $15,500 increase.
Yep.
From things we, we have no control over, they're just what they cost, um, even reducing other things. Is there a ballpark, general, how much does it all cost? All the things you're talking about there?
Yeah, in FY '23, we expended $190,408.
Okay.
And we're anticipating 230 this year.
23500?
Yeah, 230, 500.
So.
Okay.
Just, so we had a discussion in the finance committee about, you know, what is the definition of level fund?
Right.
And when you can reduce, you reduce, and some of us are a little more strict than the others, and that's fine, but level fund would be great, we should have started in 1950, it would be all set.
Right.
So, I mean, there comes, there comes a point where you, you just can't, so.
I think the, the three big drivers of these cost increases, and there's more nuance in anybody who wants questions, whether you're at home or to anybody in this room, I'm happy to, to go through those costs with you all. Uh, but the three main drivers are the fuel costs that folks experienced over the last few years, really put a crunch on the hauling companies. And so when the contract was up for renewals and, and we had to go through that process, fuel surcharges and all of those other pieces became big contractual points.
Sure.
So that was an area of increase, um, along with wage adjustments, all vendors had to adjust their wages, so those are probably the big drivers there. Um, we had a lower value on marketing of recyclables, so three years ago, our recycling material with the rest of Western Mass had a higher value, so we paid nothing to get rid of it. Uh, we actually made money, and for the last two years, we have not had as strong of a market, so we still have to pay, it's getting better. But we're not getting a check right now. And then that's the increased PFAS testing and the other testing requirements at the landfill, those were not costs that we had to do two years ago. So those are really the big drivers.
Thank you.
So am I correct, Brian, that this bulky waste removal services, that's anything goes?
Anything goes and we have a bulky waste trailer that the town uses. So it's anything goes for the residents plus that smaller cost that's involved in there.
Okay.
And just to elaborate on recycling, because I just personally feel like it's a misnomer, that it's free.
Yeah.
Um, it's not only that we're not, we're having to pay to dispose of it now instead of getting a check or n- nothing. It's also in the contracted solid waste service because it has to get hauled and we have to pay to haul it, so it's always costing us money.
Yes.
Significantly.
Yes.
So, in terms of the solid waste removal contract at $130,000 in the coming year. I mean, I don't know, I don't remember the weights, but is it half of it, is it 25, 30% of it is recyclable, so they, they're very costly to haul.
Absolutely, and we've had, you know, just as you can anticipate after holiday weekends or, you know, I'm sure the last holidays were big presents and gift wrapping and all of those things, and so more trucks have to come through town to pick up all that material. And again, that's a cost to dispose and a cost to transport, so.
So, I think we're, because we've asked every other department to do it, um, anything goes is not something that we are required to provide our residents. And so, I don't know if it would be Pete, if it would be Glenn, if it would be Brian, I would like to see a proposal of how that becomes a pay program if we need to. Whether it's like a permit fee, so to speak, of a set dollar amount that residents pay and then they, you know, put a sign in their yard and say, I paid my 25 bucks, whatever it is. I suspect we are going to have to do some, a lot of work on the budget. And so if we're asking other departments to generate revenue for us, I think we should be looking at any program that is a free service to the residents at this time that is not a requirement of, in some way.
Okay, I can do that, alright.
I think we should also look into increasing the trash sticker price.
I was gonna ask and, um, I won't try to understand that tonight and we can take it offline, but the idea that a lot of things that we take receipts for revenue don't end up showing up as offsets, they end up as free cash in the following year.
Right.
Is, to me, makes it difficult to understand your revenue versus your costs because they're not enterprise funds and I don't like it. Won't try to understand why that's true with so many things, and there's few that you can do that easily with, but, um, going down this list, you know, Glenn talked a little bit about reci- um, the electronic waste, right? Which, so he's got some work to do on that, and I think maybe I just wanted to touch on all of these and where I started with that was, you mentioned trash, we do do stickers, they are free to a point. Do we have a sense if we're generating any revenue that's for?
Two years ago it was less than $100.
Okay, and it's not growing?
No.
Okay.
Most.
So it's really nil right now?
There's some residents who are just coming in to get their stickers for the current fiscal year. The, the three bags you give a week are quite generous, and so many people don't need them at the start of the fiscal year.
So.
Go ahead.
I've been, we're empty nesters, so we've been selling ours on the side.
I'm gonna go get mine to start selling them because I haven't picked up this year's yet.
The black bucket of trash.
Well, there might be if we raise the rate.
So it's $110 a year then, instead of 100?
It's only 90 because he's taking our revenue.
Are you asking me to give you the revenues that you've brought in?
If we're talking, it's sub thousand dollars, I don't, I don't care. If it's not, that's not substantial enough to be moving the needle on $230,000. Disposal costs, in my mind. But I'm looking through these, to your point, you asked about bulky waste, is, what would a cost structure look like that offsets at least what is in off the town's roll-off, right?
Right, and I don't know if they, how they, to be honest, I put my stuff on the curb and I don't honestly pay attention to who comes and gets it. I know it's our trash company, but I know at, at, at one point, members of town staff escorted them and walked around with them and participated.
Penually.
Okay, so if that is still ongoing, then within that cost, I'd like to see if it's five highway guys that are doing it with them, what are the, you know, I, the full picture kind of cost of what that ser- service is costing the taxpayers? And if it's something that we can continue, I mean, nobody wants to lose anything goes, but on the same token too, as we move forward in this process, I think budget cuts are going to be a real conversation, so I think everything needs to be on the table this year.
I think it's similar to, hopefully to wastewater, to trash, to other things, there's other towns that do these.
Yep.
That do offer those services for a fee, and so what kind of model are, is there or would, might make sense? And then what is that numbers, right, and the whole picture of cost offset?
One thing that, because you were mentioning enterprise funds and things of that nature, you can talk to the residents about setting up, or the voters about setting up a revolving fund for, um, transfer station services, you currently do not do that.
For waste type stuff.
DNP encourages that because they wanna see them operate like cost centers, so that is an option that we could explore, you just have never had a reason to because.
We haven't charged for it.
Or very little, so, um, that is something we could explore, the only thing that we currently run like a revolving for solid waste, uh, we have a recycling dividend program that kind of runs like a modified grant through DEP. Um, and so that lives in a special revenue fund and we use that to offset some of our costs, it's a few thousand dollars a year. But we could look at establishing a revolving fund for transfer station-like services if we wanted to go down that road. Uh, in terms of revenues, one thing that would be of note, so maybe I should look back a couple of years, um, since the, the, um, service that we were offering down at Public Works was closed last year, obviously revenues drastically different than they were before, even though they were small, they were definitely more regular in the past, so I could give you like a two or three year look back, um, prior to the, the close of that service, so you can see what they were before then.
I don't know what everyone else wants, I'm not, I don't think there's value in understanding revenues for things we're not offering today unless we start a conversation about offering more services. Cause those are revenues for things we don't do now. Unless we create a transfer station or a recycling center or whatever, right? Is that, is that accurate? That those revenues won't exist unless we add services or create that?
Some of that.
The majority of that.
Some of it we stopped because it was an open question and then last year's budget cycle paused that question longer than I believe we intended it to be paused. But that's.
Okay.
Or, am I understanding correctly that some of these added services would be in a replacement for current service? Or am I not?
Could be.
Like, transfer station in lieu of almost anything goes?
Oh, probably, I guess what I meant is we took white goods and there was a fee for some of those.
Right.
And that was revenues, we don't take white goods and we won't unless we establish a recycling or transfer, I can't remember.
Fair.
A center of some sort that can do that, today we don't and can't, so I was referring to those kind of revenues are not revenues that we'll have unless we implement something additional. Right now, we're just talking about offsetting existing costs, so I don't know that those revenues have, are meaningful right now because they don't exist unless we're gonna add something. And we don't have staffing or a site that is ready for that, that's fair.
Right.
The only other thing I, I wanna add, and I hate being a person who points out potential problems without offering a potential solution, but to Deb's $25 permit sign in the yard, uh, I could just anticipate some people becoming much closer with their neighbors.
The line gets blurry?
Yep.
Getting to know each other and sharing those burdens, so I, again, it's poking a hole in an idea without offering an alternative.
I know, um, Glenn and I talked about at one point, a certain size square. So it'd be like a set fee for like, I don't know, a five by eight or 10 by 10, whatever, whatever the size is, I don't know, but it was an idea.
That's gonna be some pretty tall piles.
Well, I was gonna say, there's gonna be a third dimension in there, five by five by five. I think, sky's not the limit, yeah.
I think what people didn't appreciate when the switch happened was these are packer trucks, this is not, this all is material that must be compressed and then trucked to Holyoke, West Springfield and that area, so when those trucks fill and you've got a massive pile, that means your neighbor's not getting picked up because for two hours, they're gone trucking somewhere else, where years ago, we just had those big roll-offs and we just kept loading those until, you know, they were at their brims, right? So the, the model of collection has, has changed, um, and that does pose a limit on how quickly this, this collection can occur. Um, and I think that's something that was lost maybe the first years, last year actually went fine, so, uh, I think it got better.
And it probably raised the cost a little, but on the other hand, we never really competed the cost of all the labor and town assets doing it. More so before, which was much more significant than it is now.
It was all buried in the highway department.
Right. There's still some cost there, but it's not nearly as much as it used to be.
Correct.
I, I've heard that too.
I, I like Deb's idea of trying to get the actual cost.
Yeah.
Whether it's town workers or other helpers, it's the actual cost. Whether it's town workers or other helpers, it's really the actual cost. So it may sound like a broken record by the time you get to the end of the budget law on April, but I would really like to be able to explain to people just very easily an average home, if it's on a tax rate, all these services are going to cost you like 250 bucks or so. If you're paying for the trash and the pickup and the sewer and everything else, it's going to cost you $600, which you want to do.
Right.
Or whatever it turns out to be. I just picked those numbers out of the air. I could be wrong. But if you give the voters the correct information and say, do you want it on the tax rate for this, or do you want to pay for it out of your pocket for this?
Right.
Since it's their money, they can do what they want.
Right, agree.
And we're not trying to threaten people here with, you're going to pay all kinds of fees. Just we're trying to get the correct information to show everybody what it would actually cost you either way, and they can decide.
At some point, we have to balance the budget, and if that means we have to charge for some services or to cut some services. Those, those decisions are going to potentially come, and if we don't at least know what our options are, we can't even put those out to the voters and say, you want to start, I don't know, pay more to have trash, or do you want to outsource your trash, or do you want to not have curbside? You know, there's, there's all that, right? I think this whole section, though, just kind of circling back, you talked about bulky waste. We already talked about e-waste. To me, recycling, solid waste removal, and trash disposal are trash collection as a whole. And that one, to trash stickers, changing their cost, there's a cost offset option, but then there's a completely funded option, which is, gets into the enterprise fund, the cost center idea. And I'd like to know what that would be. We know how many households we have, and they pick up, and I don't know. We know, we probably have a sense of how many stickers get used a year because we know some portion don't pick them up in the beginning after a few years of doing this, so they're using half, and some are using all. And so maybe we can just ballpark and get an idea on what a trash sticker cost would be to fully fund, self-fund, right? Trash collection.
We can do it.
The scrap metal is really the towns generating that.
Cost.
Today. Today, right. The scrap metal in the budget today is a cost of town town operations, not townspeople costs. So, not necessarily looking to offset that one at the moment, or understand that, because it's not very high. I don't know what hazardous comes from, but again, I think it's the, what we partake in, right?
Hazardous is a contract that we do with the solid waste district. They run hazardous collection sites in Orange, Greenfield, and our residents can take things there.
Yeah.
And then I get the bill afterwards. So that is for the residents at those collection sites.
Okay, and it's minimal.
It's $1,000 a year.
Prints, and to me, it's part of waste disposal, it's part of trash. Print service is also now part of trash printing stickers and all that, right?
That's for the, yes, that's for the sticker program.
And the last one I just want to ask is the landfills one? That, does that exist because of trash disposal in the past? That's the source of why we have these costs now? There aren't wastewater solids specifically related? Or are they both? I, I don't know, and I'm just convoluted.
Sludge was, as far as I know, was never dumped at Maple Avenue.
Maple was never sludge. Okay.
As far as I know. I can, I can ask around and go further back, but it was, it was just a, an old dump, and everybody brought everything to the dump.
I don't know, so we're just curious to,
Nope, it's one of those things. It's cap. We own it. It's ours, so we're responsible for monitoring it for all eternity.
You all have two landfills. One is Maple, which we believe was a household trash.
Correct.
Your sludge dump is under it, too. That is ours, but we have a contractual relationship with Ursico. They do the monitoring. We just get the reports. That's why it's not showing in this budget. So you actually have two landfills. This is happening on both of them. We just have a contractual arrangement for the second.
So, just because we're running way over at this point, are there more? Like, are we ready to move on from landfill, or can we get to inspections or?
Fifteen minutes passed.
Actually, on this, just, I have a question here because we have a parking lot full of questions. When do you all want answers on all, I'm at 14 action items?
I think that was the 9:05 or conversing.
Okay.
I don't know. Are we good on the budget for this? And then there was one last. We have inspections we haven't talked to yet.
Yep. That's why I'm,
Well, it's level funded.
Okay, perfect.
Good on budget details. Okay, next steps, questions, things we didn't capture. Specific to the reviews tonight.
I have to reiterate that I thought it went very well. Except it's very bad.
That's because they pointed out that it was going well, and so then they totally cursed us.
I don't need the horn, right?
They started talking about trash and anything goes and that from there.
I think it went well, and I appreciate the department heads that came prepared both with data and the ability to answer questions. My first time running through on the side of the table, but so far, I like how it looks.
I gotta say the same, and I appreciate that, I feel like the departments came with where they have revenue potential or cost offsetting potential, and, at least with the ideas. I mean, we don't have numbers yet, but we have the ideas, so.
They're very well organized from my point of view.
We pretend well.
If, if they put sludge in the Farley dump, it was before 50 years ago, and 50 years ago, they didn't have sludge, so.
Touche. Uh, okay. List of actions and a list of things to follow up on. We gave some of those directly to the department heads as they came through, but we didn't define when. I'm sure some of that stuff will trickle in because it's email and just data responses. Most of that is too on the list.
When is our next joint budget meeting?
29th.
So would it be reasonable to say you could have those answers to us by then? Is that a?
Yeah. Would you like them in advance of that, so you have time to review them?
Yeah.
So what if we did? If the goal is to give it to you the week before, so if you had it by, say, Thursday the 25th?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll follow up with the department heads. Thank you.
I'll look at the agenda, and I haven't tried to work up a timeline for that night. If we don't have more, you know, within the two hours, time to go back to all those, I'll note that well before the 25th, and then we can get that data, but we may not be ready to meet with them or have anybody come. Would the expectation be for anyone to come to talk to those on that night, or just for us to see the responses and identify if there was follow-up and we wanted to have a meeting with them? I lean towards a quick cursory run down the list and say we want to talk more about this at a future meeting because we have some end of the schedule slots to have people come back.
That's what that feels like to me, is that Brian gets us the answers. Maybe that generates a question or two more that we respond to Brian with, but I feel like that's very much end of year follow-up stuff.
So then we'll try to find.
Yeah, and we can also let Pete get out of here, right?
Yeah, was that not clear that you're good?
Am I good?
You're good.
All right.
Sorry. I tried to make that clear, but I wasn't very.
Thanks, Pete.
You are good. Thank you, sir. Yeah, so we'll find,
29th.
We'll find, I'll try to find 10 minutes then to just run through the list of responses. Are there more follow-ups? And then which ones go on a list for a future meeting discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Anything else? Questions, comments, recommendations for the 29th review? Different than tonight, or?
I think having the agenda was helpful.
Do it more than the day before this time?
No, I think that was helpful. I think maybe having a packet for the department heads at the table and having the agenda there as well would be helpful.
The, kind of the internal rough timeline?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just so they know when they're scheduled to. Or they can look down and, you know, realize, oh, I'm running over a few minutes and that kind of thing, so. But they did excellent. I said that in big red letters, big red numbers.
I feel like you have three minutes left.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if they could see that.
I was thinking more about electric shock.
Not the shock.
I was told we couldn't for liability reasons.
I tried to be good about giving them a three to five-minute warning, but it wasn't perfect. Most actually were no more than the extra five minutes. They really didn't. There was only one, so. Do we have any other business tonight? We do not, correct? All right, if there's nothing else, then.
Motion to adjourn, to adjourn the joint meeting?
And the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And to, yeah.
Looked like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I'm all good. I'm all good. I'm not used to it being just done. It feels good, but it's done. Have a good night.